All right, let's bring the meeting to orders. This is February 10th, 2014. Welcome, and if we can stand and have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. This is the pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The pastor, Jeff Doughty, from the first bed of the churches in One and All couldn't make it tonight. He's over in Fairview, which is a little colder and a little higher than we are, so he could not make it out. So Jamie is going to give our indication.
Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight, Lord, to just thank you for our blessings, and thank you for each ploy, thank you for our alderman, Lord. We ask that every decision here be made tonight, keep you in mind, every item talked about, Lord, just let it be. Just let your wisdom come across them, Lord, and let them make the right decisions, employees included, Lord, that we would all work together, Lord, and work as safe and efficiently as possible, Lord. We just ask that with the storms coming in, that you would overlook each employee and keep them safe, keep them safe in their travels, Lord, and we just ask that you would lead us, guide us, direct us, forgive us where we fail, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I don't have any announcements right now. Does anyone have any announcements they want to make? Wait until the members comment. If not, then, and then citizen comment, looks as though no one has signed up. So we'll just move right along to the next part of the business, which would be Bob Watts, MSD representative.
Greetings to the mayor and board member. I'd like to talk about the fact that we've got three new members on the MSD board. We've got Ellen Frost and Joe Belcher, representing Buncombe County Board of, I mean, the Buncombe County Board, and Matt Ashley is now representing the town of Montreux. So we've got three new members. Since Mayor Sobel left, we've got six new faces on that board, so it's gradually...
Is Jerry Behan still...
Jerry Behan's chairman.
You're chairman.
Yeah. This year's budget was $40,847,453. Of that operation was $14.6 million. Construction was $16.7 million. Capital improvement was $900,000, and bond interest was $8.5 million. The rate increase was two and a half percent, and will probably be two and a half percent next year. This budget is slightly less than last year's budget. The court decision that all of you are probably want to know about will probably come around in April or May. There's been very little set of it. My gut feeling is that if it comes out in favor of the state, that Asheville will appeal it. I haven't heard that, but that's my feeling, so I think it'll just kind of go on forever. Some of the accomplishments of 2013. There was 43,519 lineal feet of line rehabilitated. The final micro screens were installed at a cost of $10.3 million. This resulted in a 50% decrease in total suspended solids. So this is the process, close to the very end of the process, that gets the color and those fine particles out of the water. And it's been going on, you know, three or four years in this project. The water runs through almost a fine carpet to get this out. There was completion of 507 emergency and scheduled construction projects, rehabilitation of 13,302 lineal feet with house crews. So MSD is doing more and more in-house. Utilized trenchless methods for 4,353 feet. In some cases where you've got expensive landscaping, paving, buildings, they're using pipe bursting, or relining of the pipe, you know, the cost is more expensive to actually do the lining, but the total project is less costly. So it's becoming a technology that we see more of. The sewer line under the Richard Petty Bridge was pipe bursted to protect the structure of that bridge. That was years ago. Average daily time response was 31 minutes for 1,373 calls. Average off-duty time response was 36 minutes for 937 calls. And all the response times were less than an hour. So they're trying to work on, if you call MSD, that you will get somebody there in less than an hour, and we'll talk about calling MSD more. They received excellence in financial reporting. They received a distinguished budget award. They received a credit rating upgrade from AA to AA+. Treatment Plant received a Gold Peak Performance Award. There were no NPDES permit violations. There were no WNC air quality violations, and there was no residual management program violations. There was a sign for, there was a fine for the sanitary overflow during the slide valve replacement incident we heard about on the news. The biodiesel program, which began in 2003, and Mike, you probably had something to do with it, didn't you?
Absolutely.
Since that time, they have purchased more than 725,000 gallons of B-20 biofuel, replacing more than 145,000 gallons of fossil fuel with soybean and other things. I encourage people to look at MSDBC website. There's a tremendous amount of information on there to include a treatment plant tour that shows you all of the processes that our sewer goes through before it's finally released to the French Broad River. Two of the first, the first thing we have to get out is all the things that don't dissolve, and some of those are wipes that are supposedly biodegradable and are not. All of this stuff collects on large screens that's raked out, sent to the landfill. The next thing we have to get at is grease and gravel, and so we encourage all of you to can the grease. The gravel kind of comes in as infiltration. Remember that anything we place in the drain or in the commode, MSD has to get it out. So the food scraps, whatever we throw in the commode, whatever we put in there, somebody's got to get it out before it goes in the river. So a lot of times it'd be easier to just put that stuff in the trash can to begin with. Again, remember to can the grease. And second of all, if you've got a sewer problem, call MSD first at 255-0061. They may come out and tell you that it's your problem. A lot of times, if it's a minor problem, they'll help you solve it, but what we don't want is, we don't want you calling Roto-Rooter and have them come out and tell you that it's an MSD problem and hand you a bill for $200. So can the grease and call MSD first. Any questions?
Bob, when you were saying that you rehabilitated 43,000 feet, that's what, about approximately 1% of the total? What have we got, 5 million feet is about what we've probably got? Somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Okay. And so that also, too, with spending the 16 million, we're looking to spend, we're shooting to spend right at about a third of our budget continually towards...
And that's pretty continuous, and it's one of the things that we looked at when we're talking about what happens with Asheville, is that Asheville doesn't spend near the money on rehab that MSD does on the sewer. Sanitary overflows, which are the things that we see when the manhole overflows, I think there was 13, maybe 15 last year.
That's come weight, and it used to be in the hundreds.
Used to be in the hundreds. Even with all the rainwater we had, now fortunately, some of that rainwater was split into two fiscal years, but they'll be in that low range. And a lot of the CIP is based on lines that are having problems. You know, if we repeatedly have problems with a line, then it's going to be addressed and fixed, you know. One of the other things is, we produced probably half a million dollars worth of power this year because of the high flow in the French Broad River. That's just money that we don't have to buy from the power company.
What about the landfill gas that you have piped in from the old landfill that's down the river? Aren't you all making power out of that?
I don't know if we're making any power out of that now, but I know that the, you know, they did replace one of the turbines in the power plant.
For the hydro.
For the hydro. But even with it out, we still generated a half a million dollars worth of power off that, so. Any other questions?
Good job, man. Thank you. Next, Mr. Robert Woodard.
It's good to be here on behalf of the whole board. I think most of you know a lot of the members, including Ron, Ron Sneed. The library has had somewhat of an uneventful year, and that's a good thing in that in previous years, you know, we did a lot of work on the building and the remodeling and so forth. So now we're hopefully settling down to where we're just maintaining what we have. But most of you know that the library system is now under a different name. It's the CRA, or the Cultural and Recreation Authority, and that transition has gone well. Ed Shiri was the former head of the library system in Buncombe County, and he is now the interim director for the new system, and all the transitions that had to take place seem to have gone well. The circulation of the library is holding steady at around 10,000 pieces per month, and that's a high rate. The previous summer reading programs were at also an all-time high, 500 children being signed up. You all know the vitality of that program if you go by throughout the week in the summer. Also, the education room, or the multipurpose room, which was remodeled several years ago, has been seeing increasing use, of course, with early voting, it's not taking place yet, but recently for tax assistance and tax preparation. That's going on now and will be for the next several weeks. The Friends of the Library, the Friends of the Black Mountain Library, have scheduled events all the way throughout the winter and into the spring when the summer reading program picks up again, and that's already underway in terms of planning and so forth. And that's about it in terms of what's been going on at the library, all of the regular functions of the facilities and so forth taking place. We thankfully haven't had any major issues with the heating and cooling systems, and the board just wants to express to you guys, thanks for your continued support. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you for your work. Anybody got any questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Next, Chief Paget, Police Department.
This is going to be the annual police report for 2013. In 2013, we received 20,364 calls. That was a 3% reduction from 2012, so call volume did drop by about 3%. Our training hours was 2,446 hours. This next slide, you'll notice the blue is 2012, the red is 2013. For 2013, we had 270 criminal incident reports taken. That's down from 344 year prior. Citation charges were down slightly to 901. Total arrests were also down slightly, 412 for the year. There were 642 total charges. Traffic accidents was down 19% to 173, and drug violations were actually the same, and the DWI's were up slightly to 42. On the next slide, you'll notice that we broke that down to kind of give you a snapshot for three years. When we looked at this, we noticed that the criminal incidents reported have steadily dropped. If you'll notice the citation charges, total arrest and total charges are fluctuating pretty equal to each other. Traffic accidents, again, slightly down, drug violations in 2011 were at 87, and they jumped to 133 for the next two years, and DWI's kind of fluctuated a little bit. So it just gives you kind of a snapshot of those things. We continue to participate in the Governor's Highway Safety Program, and some of those events that we participated in this past year was Booze It and Lose It, Click It or Tickle It, No Need to Speed, and Motorcycle Awareness. We performed 59 checkpoints throughout town at various different locations, some of the main locations, some secondary roads also. We also attended the Tree of Life Ceremony. That's hosted by the Mothers Against Drunk Drivers in partnership with the Governor's Highway Safety Program. It was a candlelight vigil, which is a reminder of the tragic consequences of behaviors like drinking and driving, failing to buckle up, and driving distracted, which is an issue that we have now with folks texting and using different devices in a vehicle. We also, the next slide, we continue to build upon youth relations in our schools. Officers walk through the schools on a daily basis. We have lunch with the children from time to time, and we also provide police tours and interact by reading to the primary school students. It seems like the students always enjoy us coming in, especially having lunch with them. And I think this also builds youth relations for the future. The next, we actually attended a Safe School Symposium with Buncombe County Schools at Biltmore Baptist. This was based on building relationship between school administrators and law enforcement and communicating in a crisis. This was the first symposium that they put on, they're going to put on several more. It was, we broke off into school districts. It was a really good meeting. I think that we'll take advantage of that in the future, and that's to ensure that our schools stay safe and we also have a plan in place in case of a crisis. Next, we want to remind everybody that we do have five certified officers through Kids Safe USA that can install child safety seats. I know that I, we actually went over this in August, but I want to make sure that everybody understands this is something that we do provide. These certified officers are certified through Kids Safe USA, and parents can bring their vehicles and child safety seats to the police department for installation. Statistically, more than 90% of child safety seats are installed improperly, which can result in injury or death, so it's a service that we want to, we feel it's a good resource to our community. The next is, just to go over 2013, a few things that we've encountered, of course, is the blue meth is something that's different, that's used by food coloring to make it more appealing, and we've also noticed that we've had several situations where illegal narcotics was put into soda cans with false bottoms, different types of sodas. The next slide, you'll see that we're also encountering where vehicles have been altered to transport illegal drugs. These are becoming more common. If you look at the slide there, to the left, that is the air-conditioned unit, the vent system in the middle of the, of a vehicle. That vent system was loose, and the canine hit on that area. Those pull out, and you'll notice to the right, you'll see a syringe that has a yellow cap on it, and beside that is a black case that had illegal drugs in that, so we're seeing some different ways of transportation with these illegal drugs. The next, we also attended the Palls for Kids Walk. That's against animal and child abuse, which was down at the lake, and we still also participate with Operation Medicine Drop. Gives a way for folks to be able to, any unused or expired medication, it's a good way of disposing of that, where it's not disposed of through flushing in our systems that'll ultimately go to the creeks and such. The next slide we have, our reserve hours this past year, 2013, was 2,159 hours. If you were paying an officer to work that timeframe, it's actually a cost savings to the town of $33,442.91. So without our reserves, it would be very difficult to cover a lot of these large events, especially the Christmas Parade, Fourth of July, Holly Jolly, there are several other events that we cover through the year, and the town is actually, the events, especially 5Ks and such, we try to utilize our reserves as much as possible. The training, we had 2,446 hours, and we also had two officers that finished their hazmat instruction, their instructor certified by the state, that can teach hazmat, which we did not have before, so that's going to provide a great resource for us in the future. And on the next slide, you'll see that we just want to remind everyone, we've updated our website. Some of those things you can reach through that website would be town ordinances, North Carolina General Statutes, Sex Register offender, you can also reach that. So if you want to go there, there's also some tips on crime prevention. I know that's kind of small, you might not be able to see it, but if you go to the site, there's some really good information on there. There's also a police tip line, if you want to be anonymous and give any type of tips, you can click on that and it'll send it. So do you have any questions?
I think it's good. I noticed that we have a new car.
We...
The one with the gray side. It looked like one of them down here was, that had a, you know, instead of solid black, it looked like, or maybe it was just the lighting. I thought it had a gray side.
Yeah, well, yeah, we did put two new chargers on from this budget, and those are police, you know, as far as decals and everything, and we also got an unmarked gray car, yes, and we got that through Drug Forfeiture Monies.
Steve, I was at a meeting the other Friday, I guess, and they were talking a little bit about the firing range and that sort of thing, and it makes me curious as to your certification requirements, whatever you have to do as far as, as far as your handguns are concerned and so forth, and keeping your, you know, whatever certification you have up, and getting to a firing range to do that, is that a problem for you? Do y'all go to the, out to, where do you go to get that done now?
We actually have a firing range, the town does, so we're very fortunate in that situation.
At the Red's Water Center?
Yes, we're very fortunate there.
Do we ever get any complaints or anything about that at all?
No, we've worked out a system, and it seems like everybody has enjoyed that system. We've reduced our time there, we're not shooting on weekends, and we follow some pretty strict guidelines, and I believe that everybody's...
Looks okay.
Yes, so far, so good.
Yeah.
I do think that in the future, they were talking about an indoor firing range at the new facility located down off the river, and I think that that's something that Buncombe County continues to, currently they're using a range in Madison County, and you'd have to, all these officers having to travel to Madison, it's a great burden upon the sheriff's office, and if we were having to utilize that, it would be a huge burden on us to drive all the way to Madison County if, you know, to use a range. So we're very fortunate.
How often do you have to use the property of it, the Red's Water?
It's twice a year, day and nighttime.
So it's not that frequent?
No, and then we have a couple of open range dates, so probably five, six, thereabouts, you know, unless we do some additional training.
And that's for the entire year? It's a calendar year?
Right, it's a calendar year, so it's not, it's not used excessively, no.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Couple things. When you're looking at on these, on these reports, what kind of trips do we have to and transfers to Asheville? Is that, do you have a week? I mean, just average out, you taking, taking, you know, prisoners to Asheville or train transporting them back and forth?
Right, right. It would be based upon how many arrests made, which is kind of hard to predict.
Yeah, but I'm saying...
But on that average...
Two a week?
Yeah, two to four a week, some, thereabouts. I mean, you know, some weeks you may only go once, and then other weeks you may go seven or eight times. Just kind of depends, but yeah, average is out to be somewhere in that ballpark.
Well, as always, you always do an excellent, excellent job, and the thing that I love to see more and more about is the way that you've gone to the schools and being with the kids. I think it's very, very important that the image of an officer is not the bad guy to catch you.
No.
You know, I'm there to help you.
We've worked on that.
And I really believe that you're, that you're on the, on the right track on that.
We've worked really hard on that, and having the children see us in a different light, building that partnership with his kids, you know, that's our future. And, you know, a lot of folks used scare tactics in the past when it comes to police, and so we've tried different techniques, seems to work really well. The teachers love to see us there, the kids love to see us there, and we continue to work really well, and I'll have to say that both principals are extremely grateful that we do take an interest in the kids, and they've also worked very well with us, and we appreciate that, too.
You're good. That's excellent leadership on your part.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything? All right, Matt, got the...
I'm just going to go over.
Ah, Steve, my goodness, I forgot. Sorry, Steve.
I was quick to jump up.
Yeah. My bad on that.
That's all right.
Good evening. The Fire Department, in the first six months of the 2013-2014 year, we ran 712 calls in the city, 306 in the rural district, for a total of 1,018 calls, which bumped us up a little bit over 11% from the last report. We averaged 40 times a month where we had more than one call at a time, and that number jumped from the last time I was up here, it was 35 on average, now it's 40. We're getting more and more of these multiple calls, so that can be very strapping to our staff. We spent a total of 23,114 hours on calls, and I will just mention one call that we went on during the last big snow event we had. We had to go to Laurel Ridge Community and rescue 30 people from Miami, Florida, that were stuck and couldn't get to their house, so they were very appreciative of that, and it was a, it was a very difficult task if you've never been in Laurel Ridge when the snow's deep and the ice is thick, so. But we got them, we got them home safely, and everything worked out good. We had an unusual amount of structure fires in the first six months. We had over $3,800,000 exposed to fire with a $250,000 loss in the city, and a $646,000 exposure in the district with only $100 loss, and that puts us well within our 10% range. We did 512 business inspections and five residential inspections. I'll just remind you that our residential inspections are courtesy inspections, that we go into people's houses and inspect their fireplaces or their chimneys and stuff when they call and request us, and everything we do there is just to recommend... And everything we do there is just a recommendation. We hold no, we can't hold them to any standard like we can a commercial business. But we do do the customary safety inspections. As well, we did 331 public educations. That includes the schools, tours at the fire station. Just anytime anybody comes by, and this happens probably on average five times a week, some group of people want tours of this fire station and we give those. So we count those as public education as well. We spent 5,864 hours of training, on training in the first six months. And this month, we're going to take our whole fire department to the new Bunkin County Training Facility out next to Craggy Prison. This will be the first time we've got to use the new facility. And part of the reason we're able to do this is Chief Burnett with the City of Asheville has graciously volunteered to send an engine company to Black Mountain and cover our district while our firemen go and train. If it weren't for that, we wouldn't be able to take everybody at one time out there and use that facility. So we're going to use it for two days this month. So if you see an Asheville City Fire Truck setting at Black Mountain, that's, they're standing by while your firemen are going out there and getting some quality training in the new facility. And then we had 197 hours spent on volunteers coming by the station. They just help, like I say every time, they just help around the station. This year, they've got to help chain fire trucks, which has not been something they're accustomed to with the weather. So, but we couldn't do it without our volunteers. And we're continually growing our volunteer company. We've put on in the last two months, I think we left six new volunteers and we're excited to get them on board and get them trained to do something. Any questions?
Steve, any hours, the public might be interested, but for, you know, do you guys train a year? Do you budget as far as training? It's, I want to say budget, I mean hours of training for your, for the paid and the volunteers?
The volunteers are required to have a minimum of 40 hours a year. And the paid are required to have a minimum of 80 hours a year. Your paid staff probably on average has 400 hours of training a year. And your volunteers probably have on average about 150. There's no way they can get all that training in 40 and 80 hours. There's just too much training out there.
So when you go out to the site for two days with the whole group, you're, that's part of your meeting, some of your requirement?
Yeah, well, that would mean our, all them hours will count towards the requirement. But that does several things for us. We've invited other departments such as Swan Oil. And we get credit for that training through Department of Insurance, the rating. We get credit for number one, having all our people go train at one time and having trained with our mutual aid companies as well. So it all benefits us in our rating system. That's what we do everything for, so.
In the slide there where you have training, if you can go back to that slide with the training. I'm seeing that four-wheeler and then I'm seeing a unit behind it. Is that the unit, is that the piece of equipment that was used, that was purchased through some of the money that we got from Montreat? To aid and rescue?
No.
Okay.
That is what we call an A-Track. And that unit Chief Bartlett built when he was the fire chief, based on a model that we seen when we were somewhere training. And that works well in this environment, you see here. But what you're talking about is Montreat bought us a Russ Anderson wheel that clamps on to the bottom of a Stokes basket. And when we're on these little single-track trails, we can put that wheel under a basket and get somebody out a whole lot easier than... We used to, it would take about 15 people to haul somebody off of Lookout Mountain. And now we can probably do that with six, six or eight, just by the wheel. But they did, Montreat did buy that for us. It wasn't a college, it was the conference.
And one of the things on that, and I don't have all these, these facts correct, but Montreat ends up going ahead and helping our fire department by putting a certain amount of money on each ticket?
That's right. They add a fee, a rental, a fee for the use of their facilities per room and however they, you know, however they add that on. And then as they, as that money is generated, they did make a contribution back to the fire department for those services. And then, of course, you know, we, obviously they're in our fire district, so they're served by us.
And we've used that money.
Oh, I'm sure you could use that.
That went towards our UTV, some of that stuff.
Yeah, I think that's what's amazing.
I mean, that's, we don't get drug forfeiture money, so.
Oh, exactly. And I just think that it's, that it's a wonderful thing out there. And I think all the conference centers...
Yes, sir.
Should be doing it.
And we've reached out to the conferences, but they've been generous as much as they can. Although the model that the Montreat Conference Center uses of adding a fee and passing that cost on is a model we would like to see utilized. I think the other conference centers have had made contributions as they could and have not used the systematic way that the Montreat Conference Center has done, which we've encouraged them to do. But they, but all of them in our, in the town and also in the fire district have made an effort as they could to...
Well, I hope that you'll bring that up to the board to discuss during budget time so that it's as a source of revenue. Because, I mean, I don't think that the public really realizes how much that we have to spend our tax dollars on nonprofit organizations. And so all we're asking for is for them to help back with just a little contribution from each guest that, you know, that comes there. Anyway, that's very good. Thank you very much, Steve. Now I think we can get to consent agenda.
Would you like me to go through this, Mayor?
All right.
Okay. You've got adoption of minutes from your agenda workshop, your regular session and your closed session from January. We have a couple of statements of consistency. You know, at last month's meeting, you approved some text amendments for breweries, distilleries and wineries and a rezoning on Old Lakey Gap. And we have generally always done a statement of consistency to confirm that is consistent with our comprehensive plan. We didn't, we omitted that last time, so you have that on your consent agenda. And you have a, to call for a public hearing for some text amendments to the land use code and to, and to call for, to call for two public hearings and another public hearing to amend the land use code. Both are basically to correct some inconsistencies and to add some tables and some information that we think makes the land use code a little more usable and a little more functional. That's all you have.
So do I hear a motion that we could approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Any comments, any discussion on any of them? If not, all in favor? Opposed? It's all passed? I'll ask again, since it's on the agenda here, is there anybody that wishes to make a citizen comment? Yes, Matt?
I make a piece of community information, follow up to Bob's information.
Yeah, that's fine, but come on up to the subject, everyone can hear you.
There's a part two to Bob's comment of can the green, can the grease, and that's where to take the grease. At the, beside the Black Mountain Natural Foods on the one parking lot, they have a brown metal bin that is for used cooking grease. You lift up the top, there's your screen area, you just pour in your cooking grease, your bacon fat, whatever, and then be on your way. So please, can the grease, but then take it there and drop it off. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for reminding us of that. All right, new business on the Greenway commissions here. What did we have, darling? You said that we had one term we'd never filled then, correct?
Correct.
And then we had...
There is a recent vacancy.
And then Don Wilson was the one that resigned. So we need to, so we need to fill. And we have two applicants for two vacancies. The only thing is that we're just, the way the motion, I mean, if we could get a motion like this, unless someone else objects, would be to appoint Don McMahill to fill the unexpired term ending July 15th. And then to appoint Amy Landis-Parker to fill the unexpired term ending July of this year.
So moved.
Okay. Any comments? If not, all in favors? Uh-uh, opposed? Okay, great. On any unfinished business, we were talking about some grants, but we don't think you're going to do that. So if you don't have any unfinished business, Snead, you got anything? Okay, and then Matt?
Two items for you, just an update. I believe maybe you had asked last week about the bakery engineering and a hydraulic study for the Greenway. They are collecting data now, as I'm afraid they're doing a, in case you correct me if I'm wrong, depending on the weather, I guess now. But on Thursday, they will do a walkthrough with Casey and Jill, the Recreation Department of the area. They're collecting data now and they've gotten all the information from the town that they need. So I'll just continually report back to you as we get more information from them and finalize that hydraulic study. W.K. Dixon, that's helping us with the efforts at the Lake Tomahawk Dam, has applied for a permit with Deaner to do some maintenance on the dam that we talked about. When we had that permit in hand, we'll probably do a press release and we'll do some more publicity regarding it. Because as you know, most of the dam maintenance results in taking the trees down off the dam at Lake Tomahawk. So once we have a permit and once we have a plan in place, then we'll do a press release and get some, make sure that the public is aware of what we're going to need to do on that dam to get it into compliance. And I believe that's all that I have.
Okay. We have any communication from any of the board members, whether they'd like to say something?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to follow up on an item that Matt and Dean and I have been working on since the last board meeting. You may recall that when John DeWitt gave the update or the annual report for Parks and Rec, that he made comment that the Town Square Committee would be finishing up their projects that they have on their drawing board this spring. And so in conjunction with that, Matt and Dean have been working with John and having discussions about a transition that the Town Square property would come under Public Works. And we need a definitive date on that, just so for practical terms, things can take place like budgeting and getting things in order. And so I think I would like to, I think we can accomplish that by getting something in the minutes. And I think the easiest way to do that is simply, and I'll be happy to make this motion, that the oversight of the Town Square property come directly under the town administration and particularly Public Works as of July 1, 2014. And then with that in place, and I think it would be good to have that in our board minutes. With that in place, Dean and Matt, and I'll be meeting with Matt and I, we'll all three be meeting with John DeWitt this coming Thursday, I believe. But just to get things in order, a big part of that process is to, is for Dean in particular to have a good record of disbursements and contracts and all those sorts of things because it could be two or three or four years from now. And Dean and Matt might want to communicate with some of the folks that, who have done work on the property and that sort of thing. I would also make this comment for the public that if anyone wants to continue, has in mind making contributions for, you know, toward the, toward the, any projects on the property, that that can still continue to be done. The town can accept charitable contribution and Dean can segregate those, any funds received in his records. And actually, he's discussing that with John at this moment or during these past few weeks. The fact that any funds remaining, currently those funds are under the Greenway Foundation. But the Town Square Committee might want to move those over to Dean. He can segregate those on the town records. And then Dean, as a town finance officer, can have oversight over those funds. Still continue to be used for their intended purpose. But I think we have a little cleaner administration and transition if we do that. So my motion is very simple, just that as of July 1, 2014, that Town Square property come under the direct supervision of town administration.
Were you satisfied with that?
That is, we've discussed this briefly. Like I said, or like Larry said, we have a meeting with John DeWitt on Thursday. And we'll, we can kind of work up the details of that transition, but we're comfortable with it.
Yeah, but our meeting is really the transition. It's not whether we want to do this or not.
Right. It's more the details of what, of what we do. This is obviously the board's decision to make this part of it.
So you've made the motion. Do we have any discussion? Anybody wants, wish to make some comments on that?
The only comment I'd like to make, Mayor, is that this is, I think this is coming to a head as far as what the Town Square Steering Committee was commissioned by the board to do. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel. And I think their feeling and the board's feeling is, is that come the end of June, that's when the Town Square will be turned over to the town as far as the management of that is concerned. We will need to be talking in the, maybe in the next month or so as to, we will still need to have some form of steering committee, but not the steering committee. We need to have like an advisory board of two to three people. And two of the names that I'm thinking of is John DeWitt and Bob Hedley to still be advising the folks on the Town Square or advising the board as to the, some possibilities and just to keep your fingers on the pulse, so to speak.
Don, do you envision them working with, just interfacing with Matt and Dean on those things and so forth?
Matt and Dean and yourself as our board appointee liaison, yes.
Right, right, right. Because that's what makes it, that I think is the important part of the transition, that we go, we get it underneath town administration.
Yep.
And then, you know, of course, and that is important because, you know, all these folks have worked very hard and we're not trying to discourage them from their volunteer work and all the effort that they put into the project. We simply want to sort of clean up administration and clear those lines of communication and responsibility up. That's a, that's a big part of what we have in mind. So anyway, that's the motion, Mr. Mayor.
And Don, since you said three, and then we've got Larry and those two, that would be the three?
Yep.
That's, right? You want to make in that part of this motion, too?
To be honest with you, no, I don't want to make that part of this motion. I like for us to think about that and to be quite honest with you, I want to talk to, check with them and make sure that they're willing to continue doing that and serving that capacity.
All right, so this motion will not include that and you'll bring that back to us?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this? All right, all in favor? Opposed? All right, it passed unanimously. I've got a couple of things.
Mr. Mayor, before you...
I'm sorry, I meant to do this on your mind. If you don't mind, I wanted to call on Jamie Matthews real quickly just because we got a storm coming in. And I was just giving him a brief update on how we handle...
Oh, good, Mr. Mayor. That's all right, Dave.
Okay, I didn't see you.
Well, no, just, yeah, just have me come on up now.
Jamie, come on up.
Just a brief update on how our snow removal process works. The town is split up into six zones. And in them six zones, there's actually a laminated map that goes in each truck. The reason for that is, is I know that there's always possibility of a road getting missed. And I know the bigger municipalities like Asheville and the county, they got several hundred miles of roads where we only got like 44, 46. They get primary roads first. If you live on a secondary road, you know what I mean. You come to work and the main road is clean and your road is bad, well, that's the reason. But we're so small, I don't see any reason to go that route because most of our primary roads are NC DOT anyway. So by putting that map in the truck and splitting it into six zones, that means every road gets pushed within a shift, which is a 12-hour shift. So that being said, after watching the weather today, the storm coming in tomorrow night through Thursday, our nighttime shift will actually not work tomorrow. They will come in tomorrow night and work all night and work 12-hour shifts, seven to seven. And the snow will be pushed around the clock until it is cleared. But I also wanted, because I get calls from citizens and staff... But I also wanna, because I get calls from citizens and stuff, I just wanna, there's a misperception of, of how snow operates. In other words, if you don't see a salt and sand truck out sanding, there's a good reason for that, because when you got a snow of this size coming in, you can pre-treat high country, and it'll work a little bit, but as the snow comes down, it just covers it up, and you end up pushing it away anyway, and it's inefficient, it's a loss of money. So the way we're set up, we push snow, in, in significant snow, like what they're expecting. When the snow event ends, that's when we do the cleanup and put out the salt and sand, um, and then it loosens up what's froze. And also, another misconception is, is when you look out your window and you see there's still, the road's still white, uh, a lot of times I get calls from citizens thinking we ain't been there when we've been there all night, and what happens is, as the temperatures drop and that freezes, that blade is just basically riding over the ice, it's not actually touching asphalt, you can only take it so low. That's where the salt and sand, the magnesium chloride comes in, 'cause then it loosens that up, and then we can come back and actually clear the road. So when the snow comes in, you'll see us out in full force pushing, you probably won't see a lot of salt and sand, but I also wanna back up and say that because we don't have primary roads, we do got high country. That being said, that is our primary roads. We focus on Black Mountain State, Timber Park, Hunt Lodge, places of that nature, where we do do a little pre-treating, just because it's safer to do that and hope for the best, and no more roads than it is, we're not, it's, it's better to do it than not, so I just wanna just give a brief update and, and let you guys know that, um, we've already restocked forty-some tons of salt and sand, we've got our magnesium chloride sprayer set up, we got it finished today, um, so we're, we're anxious to see how that works, so, um, if it comes, we're ready, so we just hope for the best, so.
Well, Jamie, and I'm glad Matt, Matt called you out, 'cause I was gonna recognize you for.
Absolutely.
Three, three things. Number one, as to, uh, the incredible work y'all did in the, in the pre-treatment of this, of these past storms that we, that we've had, and getting that snow, getting that ice and the sand down there. I mean, as most people know, having lived in the mountains, if we got snow, we can get around. You have ice on the roads, you're taking your own life in your hands.
Yeah, it is.
It is just very, very dangerous, and yet you guys are out there, uh, my sister called me one o'clock in the morning, uh, she said, they just woke me up, she says, but I was tickled pink that they woke me up with their trucks outside going up and down Spring Hill.
That's, that's, that's.
So, so y'all have done a good job, an excellent, excellent job, and I'm sure that you'll be on top of this, uh, coming up. I'd also wanna mention that over at Lama Vista, there was a break in a water meter, and, uh, it was leaking, and so this gentleman went ahead and called the water, the water department, they, they, they came out, and as it turns out, they couldn't go ahead and fix it right there, they had to go back to a previous, to a, to, to another valve, and then they had to go to a second valve. Uh, as it turns out, that valve had been there such a long time, uh, and it was leaking too, the hole was filled full of water. These gentlemen literally had to strip down to their waist, lean on the edge of, down into this hole, and they took turns going down in there, because there was water in there, trying to turn this valve, and then replace this valve. That was Chris Sloan and Doug Allen and Jared McIntosh. I mean, I don't think people have any idea what some of these water people do. This was not exactly on a sunny summer afternoon, the temperature was right at freezing, the ground was frozen, that water was cold, yet they got the job done, so please give them a pat on the back.
I will. They're, they're a super bunch of guys, and they do a great job, and they're, they're very talented, and with that being said, you just said it then about stripping down, when it's that cold outside, a lot of people don't, wouldn't believe it, but it's actually warmer in the water, so you better to just stay in the water if it's fixed, and then just hope somebody's got a truck running when you get out, so. But they did do a good job, and I will make that recognized.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, I went to a little conference on, uh, Friday, it was down in Salisbury at Catawba College, uh, got it right earlier that, that, that morning. What it is was, uh, the Waste Reduction Partners from Raleigh Durham were there, uh, and also Duke Energy, and also a company called Schneider Electric. Schneider has, is a very big, big corporation, uh, owns a lot of different companies, but one of the companies that it owns is, is in, uh, assessment of energy, and they will come into a business, uh, as well as to a home, but most of theirs is just businesses, do the performance evaluation, and, uh, tell the folks what they, what they need to do, and they will literally give a contract on what the savings, and that if that is not achieved, assuming that the business has gone ahead and performed and fulfilled, they're up, they're part of the obligation, uh, then, then it's a regular contract. They will literally pay the difference if there's, if there is some extra money that has not been covered by these, by these savings. I mentioned this, I mean, there's, it's, it's a lot more detailed than that, but this is something that hopefully we can go ahead in the next couple of months, get with Dan, try to get something to, to make it aware to all the chamber, uh, members, make it, make it aware to even residential, uh, I mean, there's things like, from Duke Energy, where they have an online store that you can go to, to buy bulbs that are a lot more energy efficient. It's just simply one of the, one of the things. Duke Energy itself, and getting with businesses and, and residences, if you will go ahead and, and have them come out and do an audit, they tell you what they, that what you need to, need to do, you end up going ahead and complying with that. Um, she was speaking about how many cases there was, that there was actual checks written to these businesses. We're not talking small checks, big checks, so this is something that you're gonna hear more and more about, this is something that I, that I hope that, that when we start our budgeting, that our board will talk about this and see the benefits. Uh, I think this is one of the things that government can do very, very well. If we can go ahead and help citizens save, if we help citizens save ten percent on their utility bills, just think what that would mean to each family in this, in this, in this town, and I think it's well within the scope of this, of this board and the staff that we have to be able to achieve that. Uh, that's all I've got. Uh, we've got, what, executive session going to? See if I can hear a motion, please, so.
So moved.
Executive session? Any discussion? All in favor, second?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.